This conference will now be recorded.
All right, everybody? All right, everybody? Is this working? Now it's working. My apologies. All right, try that again. All right, it is Tuesday, June 3, 2025. I will call this Regular Meeting of Council to work here in the social scene. I respectfully acknowledge that we are meeting here on Treaty One territory, the traditional homeland of Yenishanabe Cree and Assinenu Nations, Dakota, Assinawine and Dene people, and the homeland of the Red River Métis. We acknowledge the harms and mistakes of the past, and we dedicate ourselves to moving forward in partnership with First Nation and Métis communities in the spirit of reconciliation and not collaboration. Introductions on the front table?
Ian Chadsey, councillor. Steve Axley, still in use too, coming here every meeting.
How long has it been, sir?
Too long.
Lon, councillor, CIO.
Kenny McMorris, mayor.
Erwin, councillor, councillor.
And I'm councillor Graham Randall.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we will move on to adoption of the agenda. It resolved the agenda to be adopted as presented. May I have a mover please? Thank you, Ian, second. Graham, thank you. There is one addition. A resolution for personnel matter. Anything else, gentlemen? Steve?
I'd like to just have a discussion about fire risks.
I've got that under correspondence. Yeah, good idea. All right, anything else, gentlemen? All right, hearing any further, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. All right, moving on to the minutes. It resolved the minutes of the May 20th, 2025. Ready to move in the council. Be adopted as presented. May I have a mover? Thank you, Ian, second. Graham, again. Any discussion, gentlemen?
David Brendan.
All right, hearing nothing further, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. All right, we have a public hearing this evening, gentlemen. I have a resolution on the floor, but first I will open the public hearing. This is to hear from residents either by email, letter, or in person regarding the proposal brought forward at the May 5, 2025 council meeting. The proposal was to remove a small stand of two dead and dying oak trees in the middle of Stucky Drive near Olison and to remove trees and brush and bush on the municipal road allowance in an area that is approximately 60 feet by 10 feet, but perhaps less, in front of 27 Stucky to enable the installation of or ready to move home onto the property. The owners have provided a replanting plan with their original request. And we have asked, we asked that our decision be tabled until we could get neighborhood input. In that regard, the RM office sent notices to property owners within a specified radius of the subject property for the Planning Act to solicit feedback on this proposal. May I ask, Lon, did we receive any responses?
Yes, we received. We received two responses from the mailouts, and both of them were in favor of the proposal.
Okay, thank you very much. So no objections or alternate suggestions from those responses? I have to open it to the floor. Does anyone in the audience have any comments on this proposal?
Yep.
The applicant?
Yeah, yep.
Yes, absolutely. Do you want to go with microphone?
I have a voice that carries. I don't have a...
Well, not everybody...
It's more for...
Yeah, it's more for recording as well. No?
Oh. Hi.
I'll have to turn it on, I think.
A little green light comes on.
Perfect. Hi, I'm Sherri Ashen. My husband and I just recently acquired 20 Stucky Drive. And this is our retirement home that we plan on doing. We were unaware that we would have to remove such a swath of trees in order to get the RTM on the property. We do fully plan to replant trees. We've already purchased between 25 and 30 trees. I don't remember how many. But we put that off of buying more trees because if this doesn't go through, what are we going to do with the 100 trees? So right now, we can't fit all those trees on our property where we live already. But I'm asking that you have good faith in us, like we will have good faith in everybody else that resides in this area or part-time or full-time. We are using local builders, local contractors, to the tune of between $225,000 and $275,000 for the infrastructure. We don't plan on not being a good neighbor. We, I've taken pictures of our home in Headingly and all the trees that we have planted. And we have a 50- to 60-foot cottonwood that we're being bugged every year to cut down because of the cotton. And we refuse to do it. I'd rather go and vacuum out their air conditioners than do that. I understand that you have rules. But there's also, there are exceptions to rules as long as the desired outcome is what everybody wants. Not just me and not just you. I mean, I have no problem replacing things. I've done research on how to replant trees between six to eight feet apart. So if there's like 150 dead trees, then there, I'm not going to plant the 150 trees because they're dead. So, but then this allows for newer growth. So as far as I'm concerned, the last meeting I was at, you were talking about clearing out fire hazards. A lot, if you go into, I didn't go into the property today because I was told there was a lot of poison ivy on the property, which I wasn't aware of. But I did walk through it when the snow was still on the ground. And there is a lot of dead stuff in there, and it is a fire hazard. So we'll clean it up for you. No charge. There was an issue with the oak tree that's in the middle of the road. One half of the oak tree has no leaves, and it's dead. The other one has maybe five leaves, 10 and a half. But we bought 16-foot silver maple to plant there once we take it down. So I don't know, I don't know what else to, what else you want to hear. But to me, I mean, we're acting in good faith. And I don't expect a bad outcome. And I hope that's in the months of the last meeting. Please, I'm serious. This is our retirement.
I think you explained it well. I support what you're doing.
Thank you.
You don't need to cry.
Just, thank you so much, Sherri. I went and looked at the property today. And this was my third visit. And as I pulled up, this car pulled up behind me, and it was Mrs. Ashen. So we had a nice chat, and we looked at the property. I was wondering, told her what was an ivy. And so we did have a good chat about their plans. So I'm going to ask council if you have any questions or comments. Go ahead, Graham.
I'm satisfied that I've been decided in which they have moved to support this.
Thank you.
Agreed. I too went and looked at the site. The trees that have to be removed are alive, but nearly dead. I took pictures of them, and they can, I'm sure that the trees that you're going to replace in that median section will be healthier and nicer looking than the ones that are currently there.
Thank you. Ian?
As well, I support it as well. I think you've done all the things you can do. Planting new trees, I think, could only improve the whole area. I started 15 years ago with an empty lot like you have. You've got a lot more to do. But it's a lot of fun.
Yes, why agree?
Steve?
So you know my concerns because you saw the last one. I'm not saying that you haven't, like, you know, planning properly to re-vegetate what you'd be removing. My biggest concern is not necessarily from what you want to do. It's not you. It is council and the fact that, again, the reason why we don't allow for... What is it called? I'm sorry, my brain is half off right now.
Turn it on!
Well, the reason...
Excuse me?
No, I...
I had to listen to that last time, and it's not a mobile phone.
I am... Again, I understand, I do understand the difference. I used to be instructed, I do understand the difference. My problem is not with what you have planned because you're planning on re-vegetating. So my problem is not what you've planned. My problem is not you. It is future. It is in the future for people doing something similar, saying, "Well, I want to have an RTM. I want to put in there a kind of a swath of trees, but am I going to re-vegetate?" No, let's just allow for this person to do it. So my issue is not what you're planning. What I would like to propose is that for RTMs in the future, because to move these in, you do need to cut out a swath of land. You don't have a choice, especially if your property is far back. And for a lot of our, for a lot of our residents, they are like 20, 30, 40 feet back from the road allowance. So I don't have a problem in approving this. Or sorry, in approving this. But what I would like to do is to see us have some sort of clear guidelines that if somebody wants to move an RTM into a property in the future, that they have to have a same, a similar plan as to what this resident has done, which is to say that you are going to re-vegetate the whole area. It's not good enough for us to simply say that, "Oh, the council in the future will definitely do that" because that's, that's not the way that Lon governs. You have to ensure that if we're going to approve this because of this, we need to make sure that that's the way it's done in the future. So I don't have a problem approving what you want to do. I just want to see some work from us to ensure that when somebody wants to have an RTM again, that we have those clear guidelines in place that, "Yes, you can, but you're going to re-vegetate that entire swath of land."
Entire swath might be a bit of a stretch, but...
We can have that in our building.
We can have that in our building by law. And also, we have our second reading of our zoning bylaw on the agenda today. So perhaps we can address that. Did you have any more to say?
I think that's fair, but it's got to be a reasonable... Like, if there's 100 trees within 15 feet, a lot of them are dead, close to dead, fallen down, our little seedlings like this. We can't expect people to... If we plant strategically, all that growth is going to grow up. And it's going to be live education. This is not... I think it's perfectly fair that you say that you put something in your bylaw. And I think it's perfectly fair that you're asking us to do that. But it's got to be reasonable.
Agreed.
No, I agree as well. And I think it's fair to say that each one of these applications will be treated on its own merits. Absolutely. So we can vote on this?
Steve, one more comment?
Sorry, that was the exact thing that I did not want to happen, is to have it be like as per each individual thing coming forth. I'm saying that we need to have guidelines in the future. So if somebody wants to move an RTM, we have strict guidelines to say, "You can have an RTM, but this is what you're planning." Not a case-by-case basis.
Okay, that's for another question.
Yes, that is my concern.
Okay, understood. All right, that's for a separate discussion. And I appreciate what your comments were, Steve. All right, gentlemen. I will close the public hearing. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Lon, pardon me. Robert? Thank you. Did I like that?
Name the mayor, CIO, council members, and citizens. So when someone comes in the application, I think it should be clear that it's application purpose only. Anything outside of that scope should be dealt with as a separate agenda item, not added to. Because that muddies the decisions. So for that to be clear, we need to focus. And RTMs, I appreciate your expertise in the background of it. But case by case, absolutely has to be that way. You can't blanket everything. It's impossible. Okay? It's, it's put in for permits, then sought out through council. Just be aware of that when you make your bylaws, make your decisions. You can't blanket everything out here. It's impossible, and it needs to be handled properly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're right.
All right, any further comments? All right, I will close the public hearing. Thank you very much for everyone's comments. I will move on to the resolution. It resolved to approve the plan for moving an RTM onto 27 Stucky Drive, which includes the removal and replacement of trees and vegetation on public property. Any conditions as noted below? Could we put in the replanting plan as submitted?
Yep.
All right. And I believe everything else is covered under our building by law? So, all right. Any further discuss... Oh, yeah, a mover.
I'll mover.
Thank you, Robert, second. Ian, thank you. Any further discussion, gentlemen, on this motion? All those in favor? Carrie?
You're going to sleep?
All right, thank you very much.
That's all your patience.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. I truly appreciate it. You're welcome.
So now you can build, build, build.
Okay, let me, sorry. Can we move on? Thank you, Aaron. You're welcome. All right, we'll move on to... Thank you. Moving on here. We have a delegation. Stuart Juza is here to talk about bylaw enforcement. Stuart, you have 10 minutes. Thanks very much.
Great, thank you. Basically, I brought this up at a previous council meeting, and I'd just like to continue the discussion on this issue. First of all, I want to make a correction. I wish to apologize. At the previous meeting, I had made reference to stairs being built at 415 Sunset. The actual property is 411 Sunset. So that's basically a correction. It was an error on my part. And I'd like to start first by dealing with one particular project and then talk about this in a general way. So the project at 411 was questioned. It was brought to the attention of council. It was brought to the attention of the bylaw officer and building inspector. And the owner was apparently informed that the work should not continue, and that was violating sort of the bylaws, which you all know. Regardless, the project was finished subsequently to the warning. So I'd like to know what action the council will take in this issue.
Number one, I'm unaware that there was a warning or...
I thought there was. I thought the building inspector went by.
I don't know that. I can't confirm that. I don't know that.
I thought this is what you said at the last meeting.
If the building inspector went by, that's entirely, I probably did say that, but I don't know what the outcome was.
Oh, you don't? Okay, so he did go by?
Do you want to just play with my words? Or do you want me to answer the question? Yes, we agreed last time you were here, he did go by. I don't know what was told to the property owners. I was not there.
Okay, so these stairs have been built?
Yes, they have.
Even though the council was informed that they were being built?
Council doesn't enforce the bylaws, Mr. Juza.
Pardon?
Council does not enforce the bylaws.
It did. I thought we have a bylaw officer, and that Lon is in charge of bylaws.
No. Not really.
No, so who is in charge of the bylaws?
It does come back to council if they appeal the order from the...
They appeal, okay. So, but there is a bylaw officer. Okay, fair enough. Okay, now, so as Steve has pointed out at the council meetings, the bylaws on building stairs are very clear. Building on groundwater is prohibited. You need a building permit to build stairs. Regardless, these have been done, and these structures exist. Now, the council has also created a shoreline advisory committee. Okay? The committee met three times in 2024. All of these meetings were in violation of the municipal act. According to the municipal act, all meetings of council or any committee created by council have to be open to the public. None of these meetings were advertised to the public. Therefore, nobody could attend. Correct?
Correct.
So in other words, the meetings have been done improperly in violation of the municipal act.
How would you suggest we handle that? Council, they happened.
Pardon?
Minutes were...
It happened, but, okay, minutes were only provided later. Not within the week after. They were supposed to be, according to the terms set up by council for this committee. Okay? Now, okay, so I did attend the last meeting of the committee. It was public. I attended it, and a number of other people also did too. It was very clear from attending this meeting that the intent of this committee is not to have bylaws enforced, rather to allow layfront owners to violate the bylaws. In other words, to create certain conditions in doing this. At the same time, a number of statements were made. One was made by Erwin that he'd consult, although our municipal lawyer has stated that the council has control over the issue. He went off and consulted with two other lawyers. Okay? These lawyers apparently were not paid. They were simply giving advice. So in other words, this to me is not the direct way of acting. If you have a municipal lawyer, you follow that instruction. You don't go off and look for an opinion that will substantiate what you want. And in this case, it's very clear. The division is going to be between stairs which already exist, which are considered in quotation marks "safe", and stairs which are supposedly unsafe. So this is a kind of game that is being played in order to allow stairs which are illegally built to continue to exist. Okay? Now, this sort of follows a process in which council members have in the past acted in collusion or apparently, seemingly have acted in collusion with layfront owners. It goes back to the revatment on King Edward in which layfront owners met special council meeting with members of council on September 27.
What year?
What year? Pardon?
September 27. When?
When? The year that the revatment was being discussed and built, 2023.
I don't have that in the back of my mind.
Okay, okay. You met, okay, with the proponents, two of the proponents, and the contractor, Will Cracker, for a meeting on September 27 in order to craft the motion that you would then pass. You also made statements which are false at a council meeting on August 8. You received... No, wait, let me finish. On August 8, you received a proposal by this group to put a revatment on King Edward Beach. On October 5, September 5, you were asked a question by Court Padden. When did council first learn of this proposal? You stated indirectly and falsely that council first learned of this proposal on August 22. On August 8, you received it. And on that same day that you received the proposal, you informed your fellow council members that you would support it before there are any delegations, before there's any discussion. So in other words, it would seem that layfront owners have special sort of connections to the council and that council is not representing the entire community on some issues.
Stuart, when I received that, whatever it is you're speaking about...
The proposal, as they presented on 22.
Until it is brought to council at a council meeting, it is not even considered to be on the floor. Council can't do anything, make any decisions until it comes to a council meeting.
No, you can't make a, you can't make a decision.
So no decisions were made.
But you knew about it. The question is, when did you know about it? Not when. And you knew about it on August...
I know, I know about things in advance, but until they're brought to council, they may not even come to council. So that's how I deal with it.
We differ.
Yes, we do.
Okay. And not only that, you actually had a meeting with the proponents and the contractor back in June 28. Okay?
Again, that's entirely possible. If I don't, you know, we have to meet with people before they, before they decide.
I don't agree. Can I object here for a second here?
Sure.
I'd like to know what your point is. I don't get it. The point is that... You have a question, or do you have something? Yes, okay, I'm saying, okay, in terms of the stairs and the bylaws. The bylaws are clear. The stairs that have been built at Victoria Beach are illegal. They violate the bylaws. Stephen has appointed this out to you. Do you agree? So your view is that we should just rip them all up? That's your view? That's obviously what should happen. It's your view, okay. It's fine, so say that, focus on that. Stop picking on petty folks. I'm not picking, I'm not picking on petty. I'm pointing out, okay, I'm pointing out a trend with this council. There's no trend. There's no trend. That's what you said. I tried. That's what you said. Can I not say that? You have an opinion, that's fine.
All right, gentlemen, let's focus. Stuart, get to your question, please.
All right, so basically, in other words, let's say, having done this, I would suggest that the council actually enforces bylaws, treat everybody the same at Victoria Beach, don't give people special rights, and basically act irresponsibly and represent all of us.
Thank you. All right. All right, we will move on to accounts and finances. Oh, would you like to?
You want to respond? Go ahead, respond, all right.
Okay. Just to clarify on a couple of points. One, the suggestion was made by Mr. Juza that I spoke to two other lawyers about the issue of the legality of building structures on municipal land. To clarify that, I did not speak personally with any lawyers. I didn't speak with a municipal lawyer. The information was relayed to me by two concerned people in the community who relayed their discussions that they had had with two lawyers who are residents here.
Okay, thank you for that correction. So you did not speak to the lawyers. You're simply reiterating what people have told you. Who wants stairs?
You will recall the discussions at the meeting that you attended that I was concerned that there may be a difference of opinion as to whether or not council can approve to build on municipal land. But that answer has not been...
Okay, so in other words, this information is second-hand to you from people who have stairs. Fair enough?
Correct.
Okay.
We have a very active community. We have a wonderful capital intelligence. And to seek out opinions from people within the community, I think is a good idea. And we're fortunate to have that intellectual capital within the community.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Thanks very much. All right, we are going on to the accounts and finances, please. My motion, sorry. It resolved following this accounts be approved for payment, check 13302 to 13339 in the amount of $273,563.03. Credit card charges in the amount of $220.12. Total amount approved, $273,780.15. Ian, would you like to move that? Thank you, second. Erwin? Ian, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, it was just, um, of the two hundred and seventy-three thousand and thirty thousand, um, the RM and then two hundred and thirty-nine of that went to all right, or the, I didn't. And I think they were just renting, um, an estimate. Get with that, some of the issues.
Hmm, sounds like more than an estimate here.
Yeah, I bet. But anyway, they spent their thousand dollars, not a lot of them.
All right, any other comments, gentlemen? All right, carrying out all those in favor?
All right.
Carry. Thank you. All right, we will move on to new business. Hmm. How do you want me to tackle this? Um, let me start by going back to my notes. I will be reading our, the second reading of our zoning bylaw in its entirety. And my apologies in advance, it's a little lengthy. Uh, in discussion with our planner, we felt that it would be best to read it aloud so that the residents get hearing and it will be on video. Once, um, I hope this bylaw is approved, all objectors from the previous two public hearings will, as soon as practicable, be receiving notification by registered mail of the changes to the bylaw since the last public hearing. Um, objectors will then be given one final time limited opportunity to object or not to the contents of this bylaw. If objectors don't respond, they will be interpreted, that will be interpreted as a removal of their objection. If twenty-five or more residents still object, the bylaw will go to the municipal board for their review, for our defense, the objector's defense, and municipal board then makes the ultimate decision, which cannot be appealed. Um, all right. I think I did, but I will start. Whereas the RM of Victoria Beach gave bylaw sixteen fifty-one first reading on August twentieth, twenty-four, being a new zoning bylaw for the RM of Victoria Beach. And whereas the RM of Victoria Beach held a public hearing on October third and thirtieth to receive representation from any person regarding the RM of Victoria Beach zoning bylaw sixteen fifty-one. And whereas various provincial government agencies and the RM of Victoria Beach proposed various minor text and map amendments to bylaw sixteen fifty-one, now therefore be it resolved, give the RM of Victoria Beach zoning bylaw, number sixteen fifty-one, second reading with the following minor textual and mapping changes to the RM of Victoria Beach zoning bylaw, number sixteen fifty-one. Number one, that in section two point four C, the words in brackets, C section two point one six brackets, have been removed and replaced with as per the development plan. Number two, that section two point four E has been replaced with a through site may be required to meet the front yard setback of the zone in which it is located on both property lines trending onto a street or a water body at the discretion of the development officer. Number three, that section two point four F has been replaced with, for purposes of interpreting the yard requirements contained within this zoning bylaw, the Lake Winnipeg side of the lot shall be deemed to be the front sight line for all lots which run onto and are contiguous to Lake Winnipeg or which run onto and are contiguous to public reserve right of way or crown land which runs onto Lake Winnipeg. Number four, that in section two point one three, the words and the water and shoreline have been added after flooding, erosion and spoke stability and policies set out in the development plan. Uh, number five, that section two point one four E has been replaced with, proposed development must not in quotes undue risk to people, property or water quality or interfere with or unduly compromise the character enjoyment or sustainability of private or public property and existing recreational uses and areas should be protected from potentially incompatible land uses that may threaten the ongoing viability of those areas in accordance with the development plan. Geotechnical and or environmental assessments prepared at the developer's expense may be required for any proposed development, including but not limited to plans for erosion protection measures as per recommendation to council from the Shoreline and Beach Management Advisory Committee. Six, that in section two point one four F, unless provided for herein, has been added after permitted. And I realize some of this doesn't make a lot of sense without the whole document in front of you, but. Uh, number seven, that section two point one four H has been deleted and the subsection numbering has been updated accordingly. Eight, that section two point one four J has been deleted. Nine, that the final paragraph of section two point one four has been deleted. Ten, that figure one in section two point one six has been updated to include revised boundary for a property described as lot three, plan one four seven seven one. And for the purposes of this bylaw, has been added after amended and. Eleven, in table three point one, the following is added, a conditional use in the OS zone community center. Then twelve, that in table three point one, the section numbering in the use specific standards column has been updated to reflect revised section numbering throughout the document. Thirteen, that in table three point one, the following is added as a new row and a conditional use in the LR zone, and that would be a boat launch. Fourteen, that in table three point one, the following is added as a permitted use in the LR zone, and that is a carriage suite or coach suite. Fifteen, that in table three point two, the role for short term rental uses has been deleted. Sixteen, that in table three point one, uses in the accessory use column has been updated to read in alphabetical order. Seventeen, that in table three point two, the maximum standard for height in the CALR, RR one, RR two and RR three zones has been revised from sixteen feet to twenty feet. Or eighteen, that part four, use specific standards have been updated to include a new section, four point two, carriage suite or coach suite, included in the following regulations, four point two point one. A carriage or coach suite shall also comply with the following regulation. A, the area of the carriage or coach suite shall be less than the principal dwelling and shall not exceed ninety-two point nine square meters to one thousand square feet. B, a detached garage with a carriage or coach suite must adhere to all national standards that apply to the zone in which it is situated, with the exception of building height, which for a carriage or coach suite, coach, suite, shall not exceed twenty-eight feet in height. C, a detached garage containing a carriage or coach suite shall be separated from the principal dwelling a minimum of three point zero five meters or ten feet and a maximum of fifteen point two four meters or fifty feet. D, the exterior of the structure shall incorporate building materials, textures and colors that are similar to those found on the principal dwelling. And E, carriage and coach suites must have an entrance that is separate from the vehicle entrance. Number nineteen, that section four point six is updated to include garages as permitted uses in the VRR two and VRR three zones with a maximum floor area of five hundred and seventy-six square feet and a maximum height of sixteen feet. As all three guys, a maximum floor area of one thousand square inches.
Feet, square feet.
One thousand square feet, I think. Oh, one thousand square feet in the RR one, RR two and RR three zones. You are awake.
Yeah.
Well done. Uh, section twenty, uh, or number twenty, that section four point six point one has been updated to include B, detached or attached garages or carports shall not be permitted in the VRR three zone for properties located on First Avenue. And the section numbering has been updated accordingly, twenty-one. But section four point one three, short term rentals is deleted and the subsequent section numbers are updated accordingly. Twenty-two, that section four point one four, swimming pool, is added as a permitted use in LR and RR one zones. I'm on the last page. Twenty-three, that section five point five B is deleted and the subsequent section letters are updated accordingly. Twenty-four, that section five point one O is updated to read conditional uses. Twenty-five, that section five to ten B is updated to include a second period of not longer than twelve months. If an application is received before the expiry of the first extension, it's not, it has been added after exceeding twelve months. Twenty-six, that section five point one three is updated to read development agreements. Section twenty-seven, point twenty-seven, that section five point one three is updated to include, also as a condition of subdividing land, approving a conditional use, approving a variation order for other development as permitted under the act, council may require the applicant to enter into a development agreement in respect of the affected property and in contiguous land owned or leased by the owner after, that goes in after, leased by the applicant. Twenty-eight, that part six definitions or Mary High Watermark is revised to remove the words as per the RM of Victoria Beach Development Plan. Finally, number twenty-nine, that the zoning map be revised as follows. A, the lots described as lots one to three, lot one, plan one nine three two two with rule numbers one zero eight six four four, one zero eight six four six, and one zero eight six four eight, part to be zoned RR two instead of RR three, as the said lots are not adjacent to Lake Winnipeg. B, the lots described as lots one to six, plan six seven one zero two with rule numbers one zero zero nine zero one, nine zero two, nine zero three, nine zero four, nine zero five and nine zero six. Are to be zoned RR two instead of RR three, as they are not adjacent to Lake Winnipeg. Lands at the corner of PTH fifty-nine, Arthur Road and Eighth Avenue are to remain as OS instead of CA to be consistent with the development plan designation of park and protected area. The lot described as lot three, plan one four seven seven one, be zoned RR one instead of VRR two. And finally, twenty-nine E, that the vehicle restricted residential zones are updated to read VRR one, VRR two and VRR three. Now, may I have a mover? Thank you, Ian, second. Erwin, thank you.
That's a lot of movement.
That's a lot of, it's a lot, but it's not a lot of big changes. It's a lot of smaller changes and I, and I do want to thank Andre, who I think might be on, online, uh, who has lost his voice, but he's been our planner extraordinaire through this and I really want to thank him for all his efforts so far.
So, it's my understanding that the, one of this current draft will be posted on our website shortly for people to review in detail?
I'll create its own page.
Excellent.
And a link.
And Mayor McMorris, these comments, will they be public as well?
Yes.
And my understanding is this is essentially what is going to the objectors? So that they're, there's a separate letter?
Yeah, Andre just sent that tonight.
Okay. So a separate letter will go by registered mail through all the objectors and there will be a time limit in which they can respond uh, to either continue their objection or live their objection.
What happens if there's a mail strike?
They can drop it off.
So they'll be couriered?
Or by email?
They'll be couriered.
I see what you mean.
We'll deal with it when that happens.
Fair enough.
Hopefully we can get these out very quickly.
My point is that the process will not stop because of the postal strike if that happens.
No, it'll just be delayed.
Delayed, yes. Yeah.
Any other questions, Steve?
Yeah, I was also going to say that if there is a postal strike, then we're not going to be unreasonable with it. I mean, we'll deal with it as a compromise, as we've said, but.
We'll have to.
We'll adjust.
Yeah, we'll have to allow us.
Yeah.
Adjust the time.
We'll see if email will work with the red, red receipt or some other form of.
There was one more thing, just to clarify again for everybody out there. Um, it's twenty-five to go to municipal board.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, so, um, if you're objecting for the sake of objecting because you want to object, uh, then just understand that you can cost the municipality a substantial amount of money, uh, because that will send us to the municipal board. So if you do have objections, um, really think it owes us to, if it's worth objecting, um, if maybe it's something that you can live with. Um, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that your objections are warranted. I'm just simply saying that really consider, is this worth challenging, uh, at this point? Because twenty-five objections and that's it, we're in the municipal board. But we have been exceptionally reasonable through this entire process.
Um, and there can be no new objections. The only objections that we consider are those from the previous public hearing.
Yeah. Kind of just, I apologize for the last thing, is that everybody here has something in this document that, you know, we don't necessarily like. But it's all a matter of like, okay, well, this is okay, that's okay. Can we look at this, yes, no? Um, so the document doesn't have to be flawless.
It's not perfect, but it's pretty darn close.
Well said, Steve.
Anything else, gentlemen? I can't believe this.
Okay, how many years has it been?
Eight.
It ain't over yet.
I know, I know.
I'm going to call a vote.
I want to call a vote, all those in favor of passing second reading.
All right.
Carry.
I'm going twice.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yo, I'll be my hand down most of the, this is your legacy.
All right, I can't believe it. Thank you so much.
We'll see what happens.
Yeah. Okay. And thank you, everybody, for listening to me draw them on, but it is important that our residents hear that. All right, so, moving on to, um, I've got my rule number seven C, memorial boulder. Be it resolved to approve the request to add a memorial boulder honoring one of the founders of the VRA to be situated near the hundredth anniversary structure in the Village Green. May I have a mover? Steve, thanks very much, second, Ian, thank you. Council, I sent you all this information, um, last week, uh, with a photo, um, showing what they have planned on the Village Green near the hundredth anniversary structure. It's for Mr. C W N Kennedy. Charles William Nassau Kennedy, who was one of the first people in the, in the community to acquire land in nineteen ten. And he was one of the founders of the Victoria Beach Company. So the family is willing to get together to, to pay for the rock, pay for the plaque and pay for the installation. What they would like is our permission to do so. My only concern, as I relate to council, is other people in the community also have strong histories and strong memories and we just need to be aware that we can't have boulders and rocks everywhere and different signs in different places. So that's something to bear in mind going forward.
I have a question, and I, there's a lot of benches around. Plaque selling as well, what's the process for that?
Um, you just have to contact the RM office. I don't even know actually if they sell that type of bench anymore. It's a harpoon bench.
But at least not something that comes to council for approval?
No, it doesn't come to council for approval, but, but it should be noted that there are so many benches out there. Um, and once people put these lovely memorial benches out, um, many of them get neglected. The golf course is a prime example. There's, there's many of them out there and they get neglected and we don't maintain them.
I'm happy they're there.
Um, but we don't really need a lot of benches, a lot more benches.
I wasn't promoting it, I just, I'm just curious about the process. Thank you.
Um, there were a couple of the golf course where we were asked to, to touch them up. So, I mean, we will respond to any reasonable request to, uh, maintain them. But if we don't put them up, then we don't take responsibility for them. But the matter of hand concerns, uh, Mr. Kennedy was a genuine heritage contributor to this community.
And, Erwin, any comments?
Well, I think it's a, it's a very important, or, uh, history to be, um, cemented in, you know, a monument like this. Otherwise, perhaps the story of Mr. Kennedy will be forgotten. And it is important, I'm reminded, to, we, we support such an effort where the family is prepared to pay for it.
And how it all came about, actually, is, is there's a, um, a name plaque, a big bronze name plaque that says C W N Kennedy. And it used to be on their cottage or the residence that came down on First or Sunset. And one of the Etias, I want to say Johnny Etia, found it on the road one day, fifty years ago, and said, well, I don't know who this belongs to, and took it home, put it under his bed. Held on to it for a number of years, hardly fifty. And when Larry and, Larry Etia and his wife Diane cleaned out the house, they found it. And then they figured out who might be a relative and they gave it to the relative and this is what they've come back to us with. So it's had a little story to go with a bit of traveling. So that's why they would like it out for the brother to see.
I know I drive my white crazy, I'll be riding down the road and if I see a plaque, I'll stop the car and monitor it because I figure if somebody puts a plaque there, there must be something that needs to be read. But I'm in support of it. I think it's a great idea. I hope they put some details down to explain that, uh, how this all came about.
Yeah, they've got a little story, um, underneath the main box. Right, any further comments? All of those in favor?
Bye.
Carry.
Good.
Thank you.
Do I need to know if anybody, or?
Um, I can, I can, I can move if you like. They'll have to coordinate with public courts, uh, probably, just to make sure public courts is aware. All right, uh, we have a, a resolution on the settlement. Uh, be it resolved to accept a legal recommendation for settlement of an employee dispute as per attached. May I have a mover? Thank you, Ian, second. Steve, thank you. Um, gentlemen, you're aware of this issue?
Yeah.
Me?
There's nothing we can say.
There's nothing we can say, no. Um, so I'll just move all those in favor?
Bye.
Carry. Thank you. The, there you go. All right, move on. Um, moving on to new business. Um, Valley Fiber Activity. Well, some of us know that they're on Highway Five oh four. Um, they're in Albert Beach. They're almost finished in the vehicle restricted area. Are they in your neighborhood yet, Ian?
No, I saw them, they, they got a bit of a. No, I saw them, they, uh, they got a bit of a leak water there by a sand hill. In the ditch, there's about six guys that I passed on the way.
That might be trainer wire running. There's water.
I don't know, but they, uh, they had all the equipment up there, so it's, I'll get it done.
Okay.
And they were doing this at 6:30 at night, so.
Um, the individual residential installations, like directly to your cottage, it will happen over the summer, but with much smaller equipment and handheld equipment to come to your cottage, into your cottage. Um, the Valley Fiber representatives have been asked and have agreed to attend our next council meeting on June 17th to have a Q and A with residents. Um, I've asked them if they could come at 6 o'clock and we'll advertise this uh, for an hour's discussion with residents. And I will try my best to moderate that. And, um, and then our council meeting will start as normal at 7. So, 6 o'clock next time, Steve.
Mayor McMorris, what's Valley Fiber's obligation to clean up the mess that they caused? They managed to cut my water line twice this week and, uh, you know, driving down the middle lane, it's all chewed up on the side. Uh, is, is, are they going to make that right? I realize that plowing cable will be somewhat disruptive, but, uh, you know, I think some efforts need to be made to, to, to at least try and kind of patch up the mess they made.
I believe that is in their contract and, um...
It's actually our contract.
With our contract with them and they, um, they were actually doing some repair work, for instance, along, uh, King Edward today. So I think once they get, all the install, all the, all the stuff in, all the underground cable and then they can come back and hopefully, but that's a good question for two weeks from now.
Absolutely.
I will be...
Oh, you'll...
I'll attend virtually.
You'll attend virtually. Send me your questions if you like.
Will do.
Okay.
I think I'll attend virtually.
Uh, alright, um, did you have any data about that? No? One? No, okay. Um, brush, uh, brush pickup deadlines within the vehicle restricted area. The deadline to put your brush out is June the 15th. Not June the 16th, not the 17th, June 15th. Um, outside the vehicle restricted area, the, uh, deadline to put your brush out is June 22nd. Our, our public works guys are the ones doing the pickup and, um, they're getting to it as fast as they can. They picked up most of the brush that was left behind after that, um, fire smart meeting, fire smart event last week. They thought that picked up in about two or three days, which is pretty amazing. We don't allow too much brush out, it is a fire hazard. Uh, on the other hand, we want to get it off people's cars, so keep it down. If you happen to miss the brush pickup, unfortunately, it's up to you to find a private contractor to pick up your brush and remove it from your property and take it to Traverse Bay Landville or to our brush club.
So we're not allowed to pile brush on our own property?
You can pile it on your own property if you want, but bearing that it's a, bearing in mind it's a fire risk.
Can we get more of those to do the pile signs?
I'll check with public works, see if they still think, because they did work, as Steve pointed out last time.
Every little bit helps, too. Very much.
Thank you very much for that. Moonlight in. Oh, sorry, Steve.
Sorry, it's up to somebody to have a brush pickup. So, like, I, I understand that, um, after the drop dead date, people have to get their own contractor. I understand that. I just, I had, I think I have an issue with the, um... Just look at the logic of it, because you still have people who have dead brush on the property. And I would say in few cases, people are going to say, okay, so let's go get a private contractor to remove this. And most cases, they're going to like go fall. So all that dead brush, I'm sorry, by the way, the smoke is absolutely killing me. Um, but they, uh, they, they leave it on with their property to fall and then they decide to pull it out and put it out. So that dead brush is spread over a large area that sits there throughout the summer at the time when the fire risk is highest. And then in the fall, they bring it up to put it in a pile. I know that Brad has said that it's safer to remove the, the piles in those two times and not have them piled up there, but I don't see the logic in that, given that you have, yes, you have a big pile of brush there, but they know where it is and they can get to it rather than having to move through the forest to try to chase down all the brushes burning. I, like, I, I think we need to really start to consider, is this the safest way to do this? Or should we have, and it costs a lot of money, I was just saying.
There you go.
Right?
Bingo.
Yes. Except I don't want my place to burn down. I don't want this place to burn down.
None of us do, but, but I, you know, I get your point and understand it, but we don't have the manpower or the equipment to be picking up brush 24/7.
I'm not saying 24/7, but like, if we, like, we had like an extra pickup or something. I'm just saying that I'd like to revisit this because I just, there's gotta be a better way right now.
Well, we'd need more staff, we'd need more dump trucks, we'd need more...
Trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're hard at best to maintain the pickups every year. And, uh, it should not be forgotten that a, uh, a significant percentage of our population, uh, permanent and seasonal, have utility trailers. Lots of people have utility trailers. They can haul their brush to our, uh, waste and recycling anytime they want. And we should encourage and applaud that.
Well, not anytime they want, if they live in the vehicle restricted area, but...
Oh, yeah, well, okay.
But yeah. But it's not, it's not something that everybody has the ability to do, um, for a variety of reasons. But, you know, at least we're picking it up twice and, um, the guys are doing a great job.
You know, council's struggling with the cost and I think the current solution that we have is reasonable and affordable.
Okay, thank you. Um, moonlight in progress and projected opening date. Graham, do you have?
I don't have.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I don't have a firm date right now. Um, I do have two sets of photographs and minutes of, uh, moonlight in meetings and they'll be presented at the, uh, the, uh, June 17th. I don't have a firm date on when they're likely to be, uh, open. Um, if I can find that or women, uh, um, and if it's, uh, if I can corroborate, then we'll put it on the website immediately.
Okay.
I think so.
I had a chance to talk with you all ways a couple days ago on another matter and I asked them, I said, "How are things going?" He said, "Well, we're aiming for the end of June to be open." He said, "We're very busy." He described it as a beehive of activity right now. So they're, they're working hard to get things to be open. And the beach, the food truck, food trailer continues to operate.
And I think the ice cream shop is operating in the little, in the little lawn cabbages as well. So, one area has staff.
Is the trailer open now?
The trailer's open on weekends, yeah.
On the weekends, yes.
Yep. Okay.
There's lines.
There are lineups, that's right. So on the moonlight in, um, residents may be excited to learn that they are having, we are having a container sale. So, um, on Saturday, June 7th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, on the east end of the sports field behind the moonlight inn, uh, we will be offering to, uh, anyone, basically, uh, what's left over from the inside of the old moonlight inn. So we're talking tables, chairs, booths, windows, the original front door that is precious to some people, um, et cetera. So we'll be selling them at very reasonable prices on Saturday, rain or shine. It's a one-day event. Uh, all profits will go towards Ronald McDonald House and donations over and above the cost is gratefully accepted. Um, paid by cash or by e-transfer to the RM of Victoria Beach. So yes, come get your piece of the moonlight.
Did you confirm the date again, please?
Saturday, this Saturday?
Yep.
June 7th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And those two sea cans that are on site in the way of the landscapers, et cetera. Uh, they're going to move them and we're going to try and get rid of a bunch of stuff burning inside. And what is left over will have to be disposed of. 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
11 to 2.
Is there any Elvis stuff?
Anyone?
Elvis stuff?
Um, I'm not sure about the Elvis stuff.
What happened?
You want the head? Well, you might have to talk to Aaron. I'm not sure if he's got that tucked away. Alright, uh, I have it then on our Facebook page and I'll be putting notices up around the community.
Good.
Um, trails signage project. Uh, we were fortunate enough to get a grant for up to $5,000 from Trails Manitoba for trails signage and mapping. So I spoke with the person who helped us write the grant and who works for a landscape architecture firm in the city. And, uh, we're getting that process going to, uh, map the trails and, uh, put forward its signage solutions. Uh, getting signage, maybe another grant. Uh, the RM, according to our, uh, our original grant application, will be contributing about 10,000 towards this project. So it's about a $15,000 project. But it's exciting to get it moving forward.
Yes.
Fire. As we all know, there's lots of fires around us and lots of smoke in the air. Um, lots of concern from residents and visitors about how well we are prepared. Um, on that topic, we did meet with our emergency operation, or our emergency consultant, Shelley Napier, the other day. Um, we are going to be having two volunteer events, training events in the next few months. One in July perhaps and one in, I'm not sure, August or September. There'll be lots of community volunteers to help us out with these, what do they, what do we call them?
Travel runs.
Travel runs, thank you. Um, and on that, on that topic, I did ask Shelley what we could do about vulnerable people in our community. Because we may know who you are, but we don't know who all of you are, um, if you don't self-identify. And our CSOs do have a list of residents from the last couple of years that they used to, uh, do wellness checks on and visit. Our, the East Beach Resort Center, I spoke with them the other day. They have a private list of residents who may need help in an emergency situation, but because it is private, they need, uh, permission to share that list. Um, members of council, the fire department, police department know of some individuals who need help in an emergency. Um, do your neighbors know you need help? Do you have two or three emergency contacts you could reach out to if you need help? I'm not sure at this point who should be the contact for council to develop this list. Um, but we do need to get the word out that we, we need to hear from our vulnerable residents because we don't always know who they are and what help they need without them self-identifying. So any recommendations, council, I'd be happy to listen to. Erwin and Steve?
And the last police board meeting on Saturday, the question came up about what is being currently done to develop the, uh, emergency traffic control plan. Um, we had a good discussion with our police chief. And then we've also, we had a chance to talk with Shelley Napier. And what will be happening shortly is there will be, uh, some serious planning done between the fire department, police department, the parking lot operator, the gate people. And what we need to do is develop before, in the next two weeks, a, a plan to, uh, deal with. What we hope will never happen, but we can't wait until there's a fire and evacuation. You know, the issue with the, uh, the VRA parking lot is unique. Perhaps in Manitoba, maybe, perhaps even in Canada. But to the, uh, we, we need to develop some, uh, really quickly a plan that will ensure that people can exit in an orderly manner.
And we are having that meeting on Friday.
Correct.
Okay. The other thing, um, sorry, Steve. Uh, the RM does have an emergency plan. It's not a public document, it's a document that council members and fire and emergency personnel have on hand for when an emergency does arise. But we do have emergency information on our website about fire prevention, fire safety. Uh, we have evacuation plans, um, on our website. And you can also go to the provincial website, uh, for updates, uh, for fire reports, for bulletins on closures and regulations that are in place. And I'll talk about trail closures in a minute, but Steve, you've been very patient. So I'll let you go ahead if you like.
Yeah, so I have, um, I, I need a little bit of time to go through this. I just want to see if I can do this, if I share this. Oh, shoot, I'll, I'll have to figure this out later, that's, that likes to work. I saw a few things. Uh, the first is, is that between, um, April 12th and June 1, uh, June 7th, there's about 110 wildfires in Manitoba.
Sounds low.
That's what's registered right now, but it's also missing some days too, right? Almost all of these, 99 of them, were human-made. So that gives you an idea as to how at risk we are because most of those fires, if you actually, you know, put everything down, it doesn't look that bad. It looks almost as though it's like 50/50. And then you realize, wait, it's like there's five days of weekdays, there's only two days of weekends. So most of the fires are actually happening on the weekends.
I see, where are you going, Eric?
So, we know, because, you know, bad things don't happen in good times, um, that when an out-of-control wildfire hits Victoria Beach is almost certainly going to happen on a long weekend. We have no idea right now as to how many people are in our community on a long weekend. We have general estimates, we've never done the census. Uh, we have no rational number for it, we just say roughly about 10,000. So there are a total of eight different major intersections that people would be, uh, having to, sorry, nine different intersections people would be having to plow through to be able to get out of this community to make their way to the highway. That is not reasonable when you have that many people heading for, uh, one show point, especially when we're talking about, um, half of those people being in the VRA. I hope that the fires in LA, that those images have seared into people's heads because that, that's what we're looking at right now. The two furthest points on this island give us 58 minutes to evacuate the entire island.
That is scary.
Of 10,000 people. So, I want, I'm asking, I'm pleading again that we finish the setup of the connect system. We cannot try to tell people individually based on the area as to where you should be going because every second that we're typing, that is another life lost.
That's why we only have...
I know that it's a lot of work. I know that it's a lot of work to set it up. You have to set the whole thing up into a grid pattern. You have to adjust for the eight different ways in which the, uh, we can go. But if you set them all up for the worst-case scenario, then when the wildfire happens, at the very least, we'll have something that we can send out quickly. Everybody knows what to do. And the reality is that most people should head for the water.
I disagree with that, but anyway, I don't...
Even if, if you want, you can...
These are the kinds of discussions that are intended to occur in consultation with our emergency manager consultant, Shelley, with our police department, with our fire department. And I totally agree with you, I hope something will happen. If people have not connected to me being connected, please do so. If you know of someone who has not connected, please encourage them to do that. Uh, that's the signal most importantly that can be done in the short run to improve our ability to warn people. Part of the problem in lack of money was people didn't know they, they weren't part of the lack of money connection system.
Albert Beach, or not Albert Beach, uh, Alexander as well, the Traverse Bay Fire.
You know, the tragedy of lack of money, let us hope that a lesson can come out of that. So we need to get our act together and get it together pretty quickly. Otherwise, it could be...
So that brings me to several different points. The first is that, one we brought on the connect system, that is the exact conversation that we had. That was the exact conversation that we had, is to set up the system so that we'd be prepared for that. That was the messaging that we sent out to get people to get, to connect to it. Then we met that conversation because I already know that you got, that the conversation is set, that, oh, it's so much work, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Fine, but it's not okay. One, you do a great job with connects, but it is not okay to have one person that can send, can, can send out a message. but it is not okay to have one person that can send, can send out messages. We need our fire chief to be able to send out an evacuation.
He doesn't have time, Peter was telling you that.
Then we need, we also need our police chief, and we need our mayor, all having access to it. The other day, we tried to send out a message, you had to go home, did you have to go in the office? Were you there from home? Okay, so, but we all had to hope that Lon could send out this message.
And he did.
But if something happens to Lon.
Oh, it really hit, it's in the.
Plan of destination.
Yeah.
No, but you, you can't have an emergency system or one person that has the abilities to know.
Tammy also has access. So there's two in the office who have access.
If it's a big emergency, we'll both run into the office to make sure we can send out.
We, we need more people having direct access. I'll put, I just want to put out another one, it's not fire-related, I'm going to put out another one. An active shooter happens. I'm sorry, that.
You're Debbie Downer.
Yeah, no, but, but like, this is, this is what we have to do as municipality. We have this emergency system for a reason.
Right.
Right? It's not set up properly. So in that case, what, we have to wait for our police chief to contact Lon and waste time that way, or he can send out a message himself to say, everybody, everybody duck and hide. But look, the point is, is that we can't operate with only one or two people having access to the system.
Point made.
Okay, the next, the next thing. Residents are not getting this. They're starting, no, they're not, they're starting to be open to it, but I have seen multiple properties planting conifers on their property this year. No, like, look, look, I know that we're sick of this, I know that we're sick of this conversation. I have been fighting this for six years to try to, yes, do more, but listen. If you go, and I wish I could show it, but if you go to the Manitoba, all you gotta do is go Manitoba wildfire map, you can see, everybody's talking about Lackabonie. Lackabonie is roughly about two, two times larger, sorry, about three times larger than the size of Victoria Beach. If you look at the fire that is just to the northeast of that, it's at least 20 times the size.
Huge.
Yeah. The point is, is that it's not like, nature doesn't wait for us, and the reality is that we're typically the problem. And the fire for us is different than the fire for everybody else. The fire for everybody else is generally coming from outside of the community in, so they have time to be able to adjust. For us, it happens instantly, because it happens inside of our community. And when it happened over, over Traverse Bay Corner, we didn't come together, and we didn't have the conversation to say, what happens if the fire gets close to our community? We just simply said, this is going to be fine, and the messaging was only coming from the R M of Alexander.
Because it was in their R M, I was on the scene, Steve, I was there. Our fire chief was swamped, he was running the, he was running the operation. He let me know that we were not in any danger. You know, it's not our fire.
I can't say, I can't say anymore, but.
We did send something out, but Steve wanted something out almost immediately, when I didn't have details to send. I'm not going to send out false facts.
So just to be clear, that fire, the wind was going south. The fire was still moving north. Had the fire, had the wind changed direction, it would have been a very different conversation, and that happens regularly. And fires that happen regularly, that's the reason why Flint Flunk was evacuated. That's the reason why several other communities were evacuated, because the wind was moving in one way, and instantly it turned around and went back. So when the fire is just out there, and wind turns north, and we haven't had a conversation together as a council saying, okay, just in case what happens, as it's happening, we need to do better, there's a lot that we need to do.
On that note, may I go on to something that I think really needs to be discussed as well? The province, people may be aware, have closed all trails, all hiking trails, walking trails, in provincial parks. We know that our community is full of deadfall and is ready for a fire, heaven forbid. This past weekend, a resident reported to me that he was walking near the sand cliffs off Highway 500 floor. There were a group of people in front of him. He didn't notice it at the time, but when he got about 40 feet from the highway, he noticed that someone had flipped a cigarette into the bush and a small fire had started. Thankfully, he was there, he had sand, he had water, and he put it out. His request to council was, would we consider following the provincial lead and closing all of our trails? That means all of the trails in our community, to hiking, to biking, because they are, as we all know, dry, there's a lot of deadfall. We have asked, in that regard, we have asked Public Works to draw up some signs, and we are, I believe, if council, I believe we had consensus through email. We are going to close our trails temporarily until the conditions improve. We cannot risk somebody walking through the trails or biking through the trails and throwing a cigarette butt in the ditch or beside them and thinking it will just go out. So that is one thing we can do, it's not what we really want to have to do. That also means, that means all our trails. So that means the McCauley, the McCord, the recycling, the Forever Green.
A B to B.
A B to B B. All of our trails will be closed until the situation improves. I really hope it's sooner rather than later. Elk Island is a provincial park. The province has closed provincial parks to backcountry and water travel. If you can't just pull up to Elk Island in your boat, there's no shore lunches, there's no fires, there's no fireworks, there's, we're in a sandbox. And it's not a step I really want to take, but I think for the safety of our community, it's one step we can take, and I think we should take, and I believe council agrees.
Do we need a resolution to that effect?
No.
No.
No, no.
It's executive action.
This is to prevent.
It is, it's a painful step, but it's absolutely necessary in the short run until the weather conditions change.
Yep.
It'll have been rained today, but it was just a speck, it's, it's not too bad. So assignment will be going up, and I will help. Ian said you might be able to help if you're here.
I can do it tomorrow.
I can help Public Works cook them up as well. It's a drag, that's how we love to get around out here.
Yeah.
I'm on bike and by foot, but.
I haven't heard that phrase in a while, it's a drag.
It's a drag, well, it could be a fire drag, and, you know, we can try. Steve?
What sort of, what am I doing?
Well, bringing to the bottom of the pile concerning correspondence and hopefully helpful works, hopefully. We, we need to bring Steve up to speed with the software we're looking at, which may very well render Connect obsolete, a little bit of that. And number two, conversations back and forth with, with Public Works. I talk to them occasionally, Penny's the chair of the Public Works committee. We talked about this last year, and I want council to give this some thought, think about it. We really should sit down as a council with Public Works once in July, once again in August. There's just too many things going on concerning Public Works. Our mayor does a very good job with her Public Works report once a month, but there's, there's too many things for that. If the only time we ever sit down with Public Works is at the beginning of, beginning of the year to haggle over the budget, that's just not good enough. Let's set aside some time in July, in August, sit down with Dane and his crew and anybody else interested parties, and have a useful, productive meeting. If I can suggest that, please.
Yes, thank you. Dane mentioned that to me today. Thank you. Steve, yeah.
Yeah, so, just the last thing I want to put on the fire thing, which is that, like, the municipality cannot do this on our own. As I said, there are people right now who are planting conifers. We all need to remove our conifers, and we need to replace them with deciduous trees. They are not supposed to be here, the forest is trying to burn itself down. So if you've heard me say this a thousand times, please start telling your neighbors to stop planting conifers and actively remove them, because they are the ultimate fire hazard. And please really, really consider giving that fire pit, because I would argue no. And I would love for council to move to, at the very least, ensure that if you have a fire pit, you have to have a FireSmart property, because it is just getting that bad.
Thank you.
I actually, too. Our chief constable reported that the last police board meetings, that we were successful in being awarded a proceeds of a crime grant in the amount of approximately $10,000. And that money will be used to improve the surveillance capabilities around the existing police station. And anything that's installed will also be able to be moved or adjusted when the structure is renovated. The problem as it stands now is the door to the police office is a solid door. There are no windows off the front of the police office. People have been coming to the police station 10 o'clock at night, pounding on the door, and our officers are uncomfortable with opening the door. So we'll soon have the ability to have some video surveillance, and that will improve the comfort levels and possibly the protection of our officers. So it's great news, the grant comes to us, it doesn't have, it's not a 50/50 grant, it proceeds a criminal property, and forfeitures a pay 100% of the cost. So that's, that's really good news, and I commend our, our police chief constable for the work that he did to secure this grant.
Didn't, didn't we also get another speed radar sign from N P I?
Yeah.
Yes, and there's some additional developments on license plate readers coming from N P I as well. Exact details when are yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to? All right, I will move on to adjourn. We have resolved that June 3rd, 2025, regular meeting of council now be adjourned. Next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. here at the Social Scene, Number 3 of T Road. May I have a member? Thank you, Ian, second, Frank, thank you, all those in favor? Jerry, thank you, and a reminder that Valley Fiber, I hope, will be here at 6:00 p.m. on June 17th, or, excuse me, thank you, Frank.